Okay, it is six oh seven P M and I will call to order this special meeting of council to conduct interviews and consider adopting a resolution appointing a candidate to serve as Carlo Borough Council member effective immediately tonight, hopefully, and expiring January second, twenty twenty four. What I'll first do is run, run through the, the rules, oh, sorry, we'll do the pledge of allegiance first, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. So if you would all please rise with me and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so just, just so there's no question about the, the rules, and I'm not sure if all the applicants have had a chance to, to take a look at them, I'm not sure they were along with the, the application package, but on January third in our biennial reorganization meeting, council adopted rules that will apply to, to tonight's meeting. So I'm going to read from the, the, the applicable portions of that, so there, and make sure nobody has any, any questions about them. So what, what we'll do initially, as you see on the agenda, we will be having you answer the same three questions that you answered in writing as part of the application. You can certainly elaborate upon what, what you did, did provide. And after, after that sequence, through that sequence, the candidates will, will speak in alphabetical order. Each candidate will have a maximum of five minutes to present on each question, and they're, these, as I, as I mentioned, the same questions you had in your application. After each candidate has presented, Borough Council members will be given an opportunity to ask any additional questions of the candidates. Unless a question is limited to a clarification of a particular applicant's background or qualifications, all applicants will be permitted to answer each question. Answers will be limited to three minutes each. Applicants will answer each subsequent question so that the second to answer the previous question becomes the first to answer the next one. I'm sensitive to that because my last name tends to be at the end of the alphabetical order, so, so we'll, we'll each give you a, it will give you each a chance to, to answer first or last and in between. Following the, the Q and A, I will then call a, a vote for a vote by ballot for the, for the vacancy and how that will proceed is, the Borough Secretary will hand a ballot to each member of Borough Council. Each set of ballots will be numbered by round to avoid possible confusion. Each Borough Council member will vote by printing the name of their preferred candidate on their ballot. In addition, each member of Borough Council will print and sign their own name on the ballot. Ballots lacking a printed name and signature will not be counted. I'll then read each ballot aloud and the Borough Secretary will record the votes. Then, any candidate receives four or more votes out of six cast, then the candidate will be deemed the winner. If the vote ends in a tie, such as a three, three to three vote between two candidates, no action is considered taken. Borough Council may resolve the tie by reissuing ballots and following the process outlined in the above paragraph that I just read through. If the tie persists, Borough Council may then reopen interviewing among the two remaining candidates and vote again, call a recess and reconvene, reconvene to vote again, or Borough Council may adjourn the meeting. Gets, gets more confusing, but I know how this works, so stay with me. If no candidate receives four votes, the candidate with the lowest vote total will, vote totals will be dropped from consideration. Following that, Borough Council will vote again as out, as outlined above. More. If the candidates with the lowest votes are tied, ha, having received no votes, they will be dropped for, from consideration. If more than one of the candidates with votes are tied for the lowest vote total, then those candidates will be voted by ballot as outlined above. In this case, in, in this case, the candidate with the majority vote remains on the ballot. If a tie for lowest vote count remains, we'll just keep going through that sequence until we narrow it back and then have a revote on, on who is, who is remaining. I'll note again, it, it's important that we understand that council, if we should come to an impasse with tied votes, we could re, reopen and, and ask additional questions. We have thirty days from January third, twenty twenty-two to fill the vacancy. So if a tie vote persists and we cannot break that tie amongst ourselves by the end of the day on, on February second, then the Carlo vacancy board is charged with filling the vacancy. The Carlo vacancy board is made up of the elected officials up here at the table plus the vacancy board chair, Sonia Brown. And does anybody have any questions about, about that convoluted, probably seem convoluted procedure, but do you have any questions? Okay. Then what I'm going to do first is run, run through and ensure you meet the very minimal qualifications under the law to, to sit as a, as, as a member of Borough Council. So Megan Anderson, and everybody I think got, you'll remember as you, thank you, as you answer, make sure your mic's on, because we may have, I assume we have some folks by Zoom. Megan, do you, do you live in Carlo Borough?
Yes, I do.
And what is your address?
One zero zero four Northfield Drive.
And are you registered to vote within Carlo Borough?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Ethel Carey. Are you a resident of Carlo Borough?
Yes.
And your address?
Two sixty-eight Southwest Street.
And are you registered to vote within the borough?
Yes.
Okay. And Kate Mellon, are you a regi, uh, resident of Carlo Borough?
Yes.
And your address?
Two oh one South Pitt Street.
And are you registered to vote within the borough?
Yes.
Okay. David Sheridan. Are you a resident of Carlo Borough?
Yes.
And your address?
Two two five West Baltimore Street.
And are you registered to vote within the borough?
Yes, I am.
Curtis Thompson, are you a resident of the borough?
Yes, I am.
And your address?
Three two five Northwest Street, Carlo.
And are you registered to vote within the borough?
I am registered to vote within the borough.
Okay, thank, thank you all. You all meet those, those very minimal qualifications under the law. We, we hope you'll exceed them tonight. I'm going to touch on, on a couple of things before we open up into the, the questions, and we will have an opportunity for public comment later. The Q and A, the questions will come from council, public can later comment on, on the candidates and, and their support of any particular candidates. But first, I just want to maybe help put you at ease after I read these convoluted rules especially. At least a couple of us up here have been in your seats, so I'm going to go over a little, little history if this helps. In two thousand and five, I was appointed to Borough Council, much like one of you, maybe appointed tonight. I then went on to that, in that same year, the November election, and lost by fifteen votes. In two thousand and twelve, Mayor Scott and I were vying for a vacancy in the mayor's seat. The, the person who council then appointed, neither me nor Mayor Scott, then lost the subsequent election. And then Mayor Scott, of course, went on to be mayor and, and so did I, so. So again, what, what does council know? And then finally, in, in two thousand and seventeen, Deb Fulham Winston and my deputy mayor to my right, were vying for the, for the same position. We could only vote for one. Deb, Deb was appointed, and that year, you know, several of us had, had to choose between people we admired and knew would do an excellent job, and later that year, the voters agreed with all of us and they were both elected. So the point is, as I said, what do we know? Sometimes you may wonder what the voters know, but at some point, you, you, you may face, face an election and, and face the voters on that question. So council has a number of pressing issues that we will face over the next two years. The top issues we have yet to anticipate. Each elected official up here may have something different they're looking for to fill this vacancy. So it's important always be yourself, be true, be authentic. Our hope is that by the time we vote, we will feel that we can't go wrong, no matter who we vote for. So I'm going to move on to the initial questions. The first question, why do you want to serve on the Carlo Borough Council? Megan Anderson, you are first.
So I want to serve on the Borough Council because I've actually been working with the engineering firm as a designer for quite a few years, and I've seen, been on the other end, you know, submitting plans and dealing with the boroughs, townships on a regular basis. I usually have no problem calling them up if I have questions and they're usually willing to answer. Then when I decided to go and apply for York County Conservation District, now I was alized with them, you know, instead of trying to get stuff approved, we were working together all the time to get things, you know, in compliance and, you know, that kind of stuff. So I've seen what the council, Borough councils and the township, you know, representatives do for their community also. So, I mean, that's kind of where I want to go is help our community and I see some people come to me and ask questions about stuff they don't know because they know I can kind of guide them the right direction and if I'm part of the council, I could probably guide them a little bit more, more people than just my neighbors and acquaintances and then, and that city.
Okay, thank you. Ethel Carey, why do you want to serve on Carlo Borough Council?
Well, I, I've been here a long time and I've been very active in the community, both with being a former member of the Plant Commission for eight years. I worked with county officials, I've worked with the staff and at the time when I was on the Plant Commission, and I think my experiences, both in the private sector and in the nonprofit and with governments, would be a asset to this council.
Thank you. Kate, Kate Mellon, why, why do you want to serve on Carlo Borough Council?
Thank you for the opportunity to, to be here. So I'm a native of Carlisle. I was born and raised here, educated here, both in the public school system and at Dickinson College, proud graduate. And I've been really excited to see a lot of the progress that has been made by Borough Council over the last several years. The anti-discrimination ordinance, for instance, in late two thousand and sixteen, and the most recent, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. It's nice to see forward-thinking local government, especially given local news of some of our neighboring governments who seem to be rolling back some of the progress that has been made. I've spent the last, I would say, five years organizing as a co-founder of a grassroots group called Cumberland Valley Rising. And one of the main things that we did in that group is to try to promote involvement in local government and civic engagement. I've encouraged a lot of people over the last five years to run for office and I thought I had better put my money where my mouth is and step for, forward myself. We can't expect others to make the change, we need to make the change that we want to see. And also, one of my main reasons for wanting to serve is that I would like to see greater diversity on the council. You mentioned, a few years ago, there were four women serving on Borough Council and now there are two. And I would also like to see greater diversity in terms of race. So that's, one of the reasons that I'm here is to, to help have a council that is more representative of the community that it serves.
Thank you. David Sheridan, why do you want to serve on Carlo Borough Council?
In nineteen seventy, at the first Earth Day, I was a junior in college, and I decided then that I would turn my civil engineering emphasis toward environmental and spent my first career in conventional environmental pollution control, water, clean water, air, air quality control. There were whispers of climate change, starting in the late seventies and early eighties. Those whispers of climate change have, have really become shouts of climate change in the last ten, five to ten years, with droughts, wildfires and storm events that have never been seen before. There are two pathways that a municipality and its, and its residents and businesses can take, should take with regard to climate change. One is mitigation and the other is adaptation. The mitigation would be decreasing emissions and, and adaptation would be strengthening the, the infrastructure, strengthening residences and businesses to, to deal with the results of climate change. Carlisle and the Middle Atlantic and the Northeast, Carlisle being in the Middle Atlantic along with the northeastern states are in a, in an unusually positive position for the United States with respect to climate change. We have generally enough water, but generally not too much water. We have a, a fairly temperate climate. I believe that in the not very distant future, possibly even in my lifetime, towns like Carlisle are going to see an influx of, of climate change migrants from the United States. And that's sort of a long-winded way of saying why I would like to be a member of the Borough Council so that I can help the borough with the current matters of flooding streets and helping our residents to deal with the, the resilience, building resilience against climate change. And then to look at the future and see how to direct the borough as time goes on and as people move into the borough, to come back from the coastal, coastal cities and from the very hot and dry areas that I think they're going to have to leave as climate change really continues, it, not as it starts, it's, we're in it right now. So that, that defines why I would like to be on the Borough Council.
Curtis Thompson, why do you want to serve on Carlo Borough Council?
Thank you for the question. As an elector, educator and small business owner, veteran and lifelong resident of Carlo Borough, I have witnessed the doors of opportunity widening in respect for tolerance and cultural diversity thrive under the leadership of the Borough Council. Knowing such inspires me to be a part of the administrative panel that represents the interests of a community that has socioeconomic and education infrastructure that is growing exponentially. As a graduate of Virginia Union University, I was encouraged, inspired and challenged by a commencement speech to contribute to the city where I live and the community I was raised in. After critically thinking about this personal challenge, I decided to go back home to begin my professional career search in the Carlisle area. Upon returning to Carlisle, I inquired about community-based organizations providing socioeconomic and education services to residents seeking to improve their lifestyle. As a result, I discovered there were several service providers in place needing personnel committed, dedicated and willing to make sacrifices to those who want to help themselves. With that ambition in mind, I thought it best to get involved with my community first to get a sense of where I could be utilized and as a research contributor to the Borough crowd of Carlisle. I eventually was hired as a community development specialist. As a community development specialist, I was able to partner and network with services and personnel essential to community services. In addition, I was expected to develop, implement and manage social, economic and education programs that could reinforce and support proposals submitted to the Borough Council. And although I did not participate in Borough Council public sessions, I was in communication with members of community services that were. As I became more knowledgeable with the development functionality and management of the borough, I became certified as a social studies teacher. As a social studies teacher with a master's degree, I was able to speak about education issues and concerns and benefit decisions about the Borough Council minute, Borough Council meetings. Over time, I was able to enter, to earn a B A, M A and M E D, having qualified as an educator in the state of Pennsylvania. I'm confident on my abilities to speak on and about education issues and their impact on the borough of Carlisle. Although education matters are very important to me, I want to make sure that if accepted to fill the Borough Council vacancy, my advocacy of law enforcement and funding of first responder services will maintain a priority status of my agenda. Finally, it is important for me to mention that I remember the times when many issues involved in Carlisle that citizens in my community wanted to have addressed as members of Borough Council meetings. And with that in mind, I want to be mindful of the dedication, sacrifice and commitment of those who came before me that made it possible for someone like me to serve with others on the Carlo Borough Council.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to the, to the next question rather than me awkwardly restating it every single time. I'm not going to do that again, I'll say it the first time. But if you, if you, I think you have, you have the agendas in front of you, so for these first few questions, you can, you can just look back down at the agenda if you forget which question we're on. So Ethel Carey, what prior experience can you bring to Borough Council that will benefit the Carlisle community?
It's been, my, my experience has been a broad base due to my extensive volunteer work in the Carlisle community, both in government and with nonprofits. I have a solid background in manufacturing, outsights suppliers with my previous employer's international facilities. I've been successful in situations that required collaboration. As a quality engineer, I focused on improvement. And one of the things that I think that is really important is, I spent ten years working in a factory, second shift, third shift. So I bring with, with myself to this organization, to the community, knowledge of people that are, well, at the time we were only making like eight dollars an hour, but, you know, low pay, working off shifts and, you know, always having been concerned about being laid off because the plant I works at no longer exists, you know, they've shut it down. So that's what I bring to, that I can bring to this, to council and to the community.
Thank you. Kate Mellon.
So professionally, I've spent the last thirteen years working in the nonprofit sector in Carlisle, first at the Bosser Memorial Library and now for the last ten years at the Carlisle Family Y M C A. So as such, I have a strong knowledge of the needs in the community that nonprofit organizations serve and struggle to serve on a daily basis with limited resources. My work's provided me with a strong network of contacts, not just in the nonprofit community, but also in the business community. And I will say I have a strong knowledge of fundraising, having been the development director for the recently constructed Y M C A project, that's experience in grant writing. And working in a nonprofit, I do understand a government budget's very much like a nonprofit budget. There's very slim margins, there's not, you know, it's not, you're not in it to make money, but you're in it to serve your community. And so we've worked on a limited budget over the last ten years at the Y to, to make change in the community, and I understand the challenges that a government budget would also have. I am a graduate of the two thousand and twenty class of Leadership Cumberland, which is a local leadership program that prioritizes volunteer leadership in the community. And also with my experience in, in grassroots organizing, I have experienced in working with large groups of people and sort of harnessing the collective energy of a crowd in order to enact positive change. You might remember, some of you might have been there in two thousand and seventeen in the wake of the, the events of Charlottesville, Virginia, the late Robin scare and of the Y W C A and I organized a rally in support of, in support of racial equity and against hatred and bigotry. And when we did that, we gathered a group of speakers that included Mayor Scott, so local government and leaders of some of the largest institutions in the community, the Army War College, Dickinson College, local faith-based organizations and other elected officials, including Representative Bloom, to speak, to, to, basically to speak out against the events of Charlottesville and bigotry. And as the Voting and Elections Chair of Cumberland Valley Rising, as I mentioned before, I've encouraged a lot of people to run for office, anywhere from inspector of elections, the whole way up to state representative. And though not all of them were successful in their candidacies, they, they helped to serve by example to inspire others around them to become more active in their communities.
Thank you. David Sheridan.
After I completed my civil engineering education in nineteen seventy-eight, I had a twenty-five-year career serving mostly municipal clients in their pollution control activities in Maryland and Pennsylvania and New York for the most part, as well as federal agencies and, and state agency. After, in two thousand and two, I, I decided that I needed to look at, at civil engineering in a more sustainable way. And so I formed a private practice and for a number of years provided sustainable engineering services, mostly focused on water management to private clients and to municipal clients. And then since two thousand and twelve, have worked for the U S Green Building Council. By the way, I just retired. I, I noticed on my resume that I had put to present, that was December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, I'm retired from U S G B C now. So I think that the, the training and the experience that I've had fits pretty well with the, the needs of, of Pennsylvania borough, particularly in the area of, of civil works infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
During the course of my career, I was very fortunate to compile years of experience that prepared me for service to a community of, in the Carlo Borough Council. What stands out during my career is the experience I had as a research analyst with a state representative from Philadelphia. What he advised to me was learning what it means to live in a democracy, more importantly, the legislative process that preserves a democracy. As a research analyst, I researched, analyzed and submitted information to the representative that provided objective information for him to make decisions regarding the impact of a legislative proposal would have in their district. The information would reflect how viable, prudent, feasible it would be deciding their support for an idea. The most important aspect of this experience was having cooperative rapport and partnership with people who were different from me when resolving matters and issues related to a common cause. Also, I have excellent communication skills that permit me to communicate effectively in debates, discussions and conversations. In addition to the above, I was an analyst for the Department of Community and Economic Development. In that position, I reviewed and case-managed grant proposals for economic development from communities throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Under the governorship of Ed Rendell, I was assigned to the State Department as an administrative officer. During that experience, it was my duty to ensure the integrity of elections throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I answered questions from polling offices regarding the election systems, functionalities, provided training and offered computer application support to computer technicians, building software relevant to the election process. Throughout my experience as an employee with the Commonwealth, I attended meetings at the local unemployment office in Carlisle, participated in collaboration with Dickinson College to invite scholars to Carlisle, networked with the Department of Corrections to discuss and offer solutions related to criminal justice sentencing policies, established recruiting posts to recruit candidates to test for a position in state police, contacted a player from the Washington Football Club to develop a community-based learning center, supervised an after-school physical fitness program in the Carlisle Recreation Center, and organized a group of parents to address education concerns at a school board meeting. As an intelligence analyst for the Federal Bureau of Investigation and the Twelfth Counterintelligence Team with the United States Marine Corps, I provided accurate information to officers and field officers regarding matters, issues and concerns related to safety and security of the United States. I collaborated with law enforcement agencies and military stations to exchange information related to law enforcement and military ops, operation. Both of these positions require top secret clearances. For added personal value, I served on boards with O I C, Carlisle Arts Learning Center, Habitat for Humanity and the Downtown Neighborhood Commit, uh, Connection, and volunteered my services to several agencies throughout the Carlo Borough. and volunteered my services to several agencies throughout the Carlisle Borough.
Okay, Mayor Anderson.
As I stated, I do have the background dealing, working in, with York County Conservation District, um, which we closely were working with DEP on a regular basis. So I do have the, you know, doing the new permits. I'm not sure if anybody has done any of the MPBS stuff. It seems how, um, some of the reports went from like this to now like this that have to be submitted. So there's a lot of like understanding of how DEP, uh, awarded the permitting and all that. Um, I also, for a couple of years when the recession happened, I worked for a collecting agency. So I know how to, when you get a irate customer or collect, someone that you're collecting from, how to like kind of calm them down. That's, I've had to use that in the engineering field also once in a while in some meetings. Um, but, um, also my experience is I'm not originally from Carlisle. I grew up right outside Youngstown, Ohio, in Warren, Ohio. And if anybody has seen how that community went because of the steel mills, why it's so Youngstown, kind of like, it's gloomy, to tell you the truth. Um, Warren, Ohio is getting to that point too because General Motors shut down. When General Motors shut down, all the other plants shut down. I don't want to see that happen in Carlisle. I don't want to see another community deal with where I go home to see my family and there is just my father. Cause my brother moved away because there was nothing for our age to stay in the community. It was never, we knew right away, once we grow, we college, we'll have to move. And so my experiences, my mom was a school teacher. She was a specialized teacher and she always said, education. Know what you, you know, you don't know something, learning, research it, you know, that kind of stuff. So anytime I have like questions about anything, or I'm not quite sure of how to approach something, that's the first thing I do is go and research it. And when we moved here, we've been here for eleven years now. And there's, like I said, I don't want to see the jobs diminish because of something happening in the community. I'd rather see more industry come and keep building it than seeing what my family has had to deal with back in Ohio. And even to the point where my dad comes out here, he's like, we never had any of this here. So, and of course, with my other experiences are too, is, um, diversity. Um, I'm not sure. My husband is very diverse. He is, you guys probably have all seen it, if you live in Carlisle, he wears kilts around town. So, and we've had to deal with car show people coming around and giving us the dirtiest looks or making comments. And we just have to realize, it's like when we heard that we're all American city and diverse, he's like, I, what would happen if I was in Youngstown doing this? You know, it'd be a completely different situation. And he's like, I love it here. You know, this is where I want to be because he can walk down the street. He can walk into a grocery store in his skirt and no one really questions him. You know, he might get a side look, but after so many months of doing it, no one has said anything to him. Which was also made other people in the community more comfortable to do it too. So.
Okay. And the, the final of the three initial questions, and, uh, begin with Kate Mellon. Uh, what objectives and projects do you envision Carlisle pursuing in the next five years?
Um, so one of the, the needs that I think is the most urgent, um, in the Carlisle Borough and the greater Carlisle area is affordable housing. Um, there's, uh, has been a problem over the years with, um, access to affordable, um, housing, uh, rental properties at, at, at affordable rates that are, um, that are livable. Um, wages have not kept up with the, the steep increase in rents over the last couple of years. Um, and so I think that the problem is becoming more acute. Um, so one of the things I would like to see the council address, um, is perhaps to find some creative solutions to zoning issues in order to, to create, um, more affordable housing, um, within the borough. Um, and re- at a related issue, um, with traffic and parking. Um, I live downtown. I work downtown, um, but I have not been able to go completely car-free um, because of a lack of, um, adequate public transportation or, um, access to some services in, within the borough. I, I feel that I still need my car in order to do a lot of my errands and shopping. Um, so to, to, uh, hope, hopefully address over the next several years, both, um, an increase in public transport and, um, an increased business development in the downtown area to bring some of the services downtown, um, that right now, uh, we might currently need, um, our cars. Now, all of this is also, um, in addition to the regular, um, functioning, functioning of government. Um, so trash removal, um, stormwater, um, infrastructure. Um, I, I think, uh, being a, an employee of the YMCA, I think we all know that one of the worst intersections in town is at the intersection of Walnut Bottom Road, West Street, and Willow Street. Uh, so I would like to see the council find some way to alleviate the, the stormwatering flooding issues, um, in that neighborhood. Um, and, you know, uh, to continue working towards, um, safer streets and, um, uh, a, a, a more inclusive community I would like to see over the next several years.
Thank you. David Scher.
Uh, as you know, the, um, um, federal Congress passed, uh, Public Law one seventeen fifty-eight, uh, in the current session, the Infrastructure Act. And this, um, as it, um, as it, as the money is, is appropriated to, um, to pay for the, uh, tens of billions of dollars of, of effort, there will be many opportunities for municipalities to, um, seek funding, uh, such as the, the BRIC, the Building Resistance Infrastruct- in Infrastructure in Communities. There's a billion dollars from, uh, fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-six. And electric vehicle charging, uh, infrastructure, two and a half billion dollars from, uh, fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-six. Uh, and, and then as, as Catherine says, the, um, the, um, improving the, the resilience of the borough's infrastructure, such as, as Walnut Bottom Road, um, and, uh, and Willow Street, and, uh, also helping the residents in areas such as Walnut Bottom to, um, to build resilience in their, um, in their own homes and businesses. And as, as an example of, of, um, what I was, uh, driving out of my, uh, the answer to the first question, um, uh, I, I see, um, an opportunity to work on current issues and, and also have a view to the future and how, uh, current activities could, um, uh, create conditions that will welcome, um, uh, additional residents as, as the future unfolds. As an example, um, accommodating, uh, walkers and bicyclists, uh, uh, in, along with automobiles, uh, in the transportation infrastructure in, in the borough will have an immediate benefit of, um, decreasing the emissions by allowing people to, uh, to walk or bicycle instead of, uh, taking the car. And of course, also a public health, uh, positive public health, um, um, impact. But also, it, it, um, uh, establishes the, the possibility or creates the possibility of, uh, a household moving into Carlisle, say, coming from Phoenix where they have to, uh, whether they've decided they need to move back to, uh, to the Northeast. Maybe that household doesn't need two cars when they come back into the Northeast. Maybe they can get along with one car because, uh, the, the municipality has an infrastructure that, that, that accommodates that. So that, that sort of thinking is, is, um, what I have in mind for, for pretty much all, all five of the, uh, the types of projects that I mentioned in my, uh, response.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
The most important objective and projects I envision for the next five years will hopefully address tolerance and diversity, eradicate the COVID crisis, and bring people living in Carlisle and surrounding area together. Challenges to realize the new norms, objectives, and projects that will benefit Carlisle are going to require a commitment beyond measure on my part as a Borough Council member. The commitment I want to consider include multiple sources of education funding that be, can be considered to maintain a fiscal foundation that is viable, feasible, prudent, and self-sustaining. Although my vi- my vision is ambitious and it does not need increased local tax revenue, revenue. Over the next five years, I believe public education in general, students and parents may need to consider learning alternat- alternatives that are different and best suited for individual ambitions. Strengthening civics learning and public education is an important priority to me as a social studies teacher. As a student at Penn State, I researched and developed the civics curriculum for the community school concept. The community school concept provides the opportunity to implement education reform ideas that is an extension of public education and should remain such. What I discovered in the, in my research is that community schools can be used in a variety of ways to support education reform ideas, learning enrichment, remediation and reinforcement, and career development. For example, some of the education reform ideas I have in mind are for learning behaviors, music and arts development programs, summer athletics and education credits for early high school graduation, video brain training games and, and career development like truck driving and nursing that will all for training after school. In addition to bringing people together in Carlisle and the surrounding area together over the next five years, I would be excited to participate in planning, discussing, and recommendation strategies that designed to revitalize the downtown business community of Carlisle. As an idea, I'm hopeful that live music could make its way back into the Carlisle area, area. Hopefully live entertainment and high levels of socialization will refor- reinforce an already robust economy in Carlisle. In view of the above, I strongly believe intimate discussions in venues like the high school classroom and health facilities have a place that can advance social, economic, education, and political goals and objectives. These ideas could be presented to a Borough Council at the appropriate time for consideration. Also having public lectures given by scholars who are writing about issues or sharing the personal stories have merit. For additional value, it will reestablish my interest in community service as a volunteer and becoming a member of Borough, of Board Directorships that allow me to share not only my thoughts, but the thinking of others. Everyone, everyone that is capable must play a part in constructing a new norm that defines what it means to live in a democracy. With this being said, I must be mindful of the needs to raise funds as a volunteer that benefit the whole community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson.
So I see us still being that Ameri- all-American city. I want us to continue thriving for that. And with that, I want us to have other people who are like my husband and I, who moved out here for work. And we were living in the Candigsburg and we just were by ourselves all weekend when he, cause he was, he's a truck driver. So he was gone Monday through Friday and on the weekends, we had no close-knit friends or anything. We moved out here and we started going downtown and we've met so many different people between the ICE fest, which we are excited for every year, which they don't do that in many cities, at least not back in our area. So we take pictures and we send it to families and now we have all our family want to come out for those weekends. Which then that means like how many other people staying at hotels and go to the businesses and help the businesses downtown. I want to see more stuff like that, more festivals that we advertise and we get them coming out. I mean, I was supposed to be, um, helping with Pride Week right before the pandemic hit. We had like two meetings and that was it. And I was so excited to be a part of that because they, everybody had so many great ideas of getting the community together. And I would love seeing that. Um, but I also see that we do have some issues. Um, I rent and I've been renting the same house for eleven years now. And our owner was, he was never around. And we have so many issues in that house. My rent went up, but he never made any changes to the house unless it completely broke. And we didn't know what resources we had. I want to make it easier for the renters to know that if you're renting a house or even an apartment, here's your resources. Um, we have new owners who own it now and we've had to give them time to start adjusting because there was so much wrong that we can't fix ourselves. And it's not our responsibility. There has more been in my bathroom for years and he didn't want to do anything about it. Now these new owners want to fix it, but they just don't know what major issue where to start, you know? So I want to be able to help renters to know that if there is involved in their homes, they do have a resources to go to. I just found this out after living with it for ten years, you know, that there were some places I could have gone to and asked for help with our landlord. Um, the other issue we, I've had is with the trash collection. Um, my husband makes sure the trash is not heavy. Um, he'll come home and the trash isn't taken. Um, this was after one of the Fourth of July, get together, like Fourth of July, the, the next day. And my husband happened to be home and he runs out. And the guy's like, it was too heavy. And my husband picked it up, it's pinky. And he goes, well, you can't put it on the trash truck. You're not allowed to touch it. And I won't touch it again. We've had those issues. Um, recycling changed the one year and we didn't get the notification. Certain things weren't being taken. It was only on the website. So we came home and our trash was literally upside down with all our glass bottles inside it. So when my husband went to go flip it back aside, glass was everywhere. He hadn't cleaned that up. It's something's not right with our trash, especially right now, you know? We understand that there's a ma- um, manufacturing problem with getting the bags. But that five, whatever it is now sticker is either for one bag each, which used to hold three, four bags of trash, is now, or I have to go buy another bigger bag for about another five, ten bucks to put more trash in. So now instead of my trash is costing, costing me like five bucks, it's costing me more. And I've seen it, too many people complaining about that in the Carlisle community, on Facebook, my neighbors. And I want to make it to where we shouldn't have to worry about trying to find the bags, trying to find the stickers or any of that. I want to make it easier for them. Um, those are some of the issues I know I've had living in Carlisle. But, you know, I know I'm seeing other people saying the same thing, that maybe that's something that needs to change. Maybe we need to sit down and discuss where to go with that, especially if the people who we have doing our trash pick up. They don't care about the community. They're just doing a job and they don't care that, you know, maybe we have an older, cause our full street, there's quite a few of older women who can't do that kind of stuff. And they have to take their trash one by one down. If it's not picked up, they can't take it back up. They're gradually taking their white bags down to the big huge large bag to put it in because they can't do it themselves. So if it doesn't get there, it's just going to sit there all week. So those are kind of the issues that I know I've come in contact with where, where I live and being in the city of Carlisle. And I will fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Karen.
Um, yeah, Cumberland County is, uh, one of the fastest-growing, uh, counties in the state. And one of the things that I, um, have seen is that, um, due to, you know, the borough is only defined and there are a few building like lots left, like fairgrounds. But the surrounding area is turning into subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. Uh, there's two major ones that are going in over, um, Cliffs Delft Road. Um, then they're going to tunnel in through Orange Street. That's already an issue. Um, out Dickinson Township is growing. Uh, everybody's going to come in and shop, you know, for groceries or, or gas or whatever, go to the Walmart. So I think traffic is a really major issue. And for us who live in town, um, It has become a increasingly safety issue. Uh, just in the last few months, um, four parked cars, two on College Street, one on West Street, one on Pitt Street, parked cars, cars have have crashed into them. And people are speeding, they run through stop signs, they run through the traffic lights. I think that other communities have implemented uh traffic quieting and ways to slow it down. And I've seen it in big cities and smaller towns and towns about our size. So those are some of the things I would like to work on. Also, uh, I've lived here, like I said, since the eighties. And we had two big major snowfalls where the interstate actually got shut down. So even a small snowfall impacts foot traffic because the borough takes care of the streets, but not for the walkers. And my husband and I walk an average of three to five miles a day. That Monday when we had that big snowstorm, we couldn't even cross the street because the the plows had plowed, everything shut. So we had to climb over big masses of snow and ice and that's always constant. So I think that's something else because other communities like Lancaster, York, Harrisburg, they all have a sm- snow emergency plan. I don't see why we can't have one too. Even today, going to the post office downtown, I walk. And again, some of the intersections are still clogged with ice. And now it's worse because it's been melting and refreezing. And the other thing that I wanted to talk addresses um our aging infrastructure, but that's true for just about all communities. I know that there's still um, we have water leaks from the pipes. And uh, uh, the alleys are in deplorable condition. Um, and I know that you have made them uh street names so that you collect money from the state, but nobody ever puts any money into them. So, um, yeah, those are the three major issues. I did did hear people talk about, you know, housing and, you know, one of the issues is warehouses came in and they're paying over twenty dollars an hour. And influx of people have come in and right now I understand there is more people looking for housing than there is housing available, but that's true for all communities. It's not just a, you know, Carlisle problem. I don't think it's a, I think it's going to be a very difficult and you know, uh, decision because we don't have a lot of space to build on. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move move on from from the script and to to questions directly from from council. I'm going to start to my to my right. Um, Council Perry, do you do you have any questions for the applicants?
Um, actually I do have, uh, I have one and this is for um for Curtis. And looking at all of your resumes, um, like I said, they're all really good. Um, Curtis, I've known you for a long time. And reading your resume, I saw that you, you know, you've had very many um positions and things. So my question is, um, given your many positions, what are three things you're most proud of accomplishing in your professional life?
Well, one of them was uh getting my education. That played a monumental, you know, role in me being where I'm at at this particular time. The second one is being able to navigate through a system without being destructive, not only to myself, but to others around me. And the third thing that uh I am most proud of is being a human being.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I I think we could probably broaden that to to everybody if you, yeah. So so why don't we go back down the rest rest of the list in order. Mr. Sheridan, you would you would have been next. So could you answer uh Council Perry's question? Three, the three, three things you're most proud of in your your professional life, I think was phrased. You could say three things you're most proud of in your in your experience or life, professional life.
Um, the 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 twenty-five years that I spent um in what I call big engineering. Um, I served hundreds of of municipal clients and um, that's that's certainly one of them. The the second thing would be um when I went into my second career and and um decided that I was going to learn how to do, how to handle and manage um lead projects, um leadership and energy and environmental design um projects. Um, I but I self-taught and um and achieved um uh certification or um, yeah, certification for a a dozen or so uh projects, including one here in town. Uh, the um, the the two buildings that um brick used to be in them, there's a new restaurant going into actually the developers are putting the the first floor of those two buildings together uh for the new restaurant. So that's the second one. And then the third one is is um the the uh nine years that I've spent at the the US Green Building Council, I've um, I've been able to help project teams, uh thousands of project teams. And uh just being a part of USGBC and seeing the the hundreds of millions of square feet of uh building projects that have been built uh over those years to uh to high standards of energy management and and sustainability is is something that that really makes me feel proud.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Uh, Megan Anderson, three, three things you're most proud of.
Well, the three things I'm most proud of is basically some of the sites right now that I like work in Hanover. And a lot of our projects down there is very small sites for design work and being able to take a small site, meet all the requirements and still find ways of reducing the runoff. And then see it being built. So basically that's one of the things I can, you know, I go past this one site every day and every time I turn around, there's another portion of it built and I think to myself, I helped design that. I'm helping those people who are moving from Barrowland up to Hanover to have their home that's someone built by my design, you know, I'm proud of seeing those. I'm also proud to see where, when I was with the district, you know, learning more about environmental aspects than I had probably ever thought I could learn. I mean, we had to do workshops for wetland stuff and a lot of agricultural, you know, when I went to my engineering courses, we never dealt with agricultural. I've learned so much in that that a lot of people might not know. And if they didn't know, they would understand it was like like organic's not always what you consider organic, you know, if you had to talk to these farmers, they have different things that they can. So here everybody thinks that it's the best of the best and I've learned that it is if they can get those resources to their farm. If they can't, they use the normal resources that another farmer who's not being considered organic is. So that kind of widened my eyes to, just because it says it's something, doesn't always mean it's what it should be. And I've learned to, in my career, that not take everything by face value of it. You know, if it says it's this, make sure you look into it because you never know what you're really getting when they state that. Because there could be like loopholes or anything. So I've kind of learned in my career to not really trust what you thought you used to trust. And look into things more, be educated as what my mom always taught us, educate yourself on what, you know, is going on that you're looking into. So I kind of, those are my three things I've learned with my career.
Thank you. How's it carryer?
Well, uh, first thing is my my family is what I'm proud of. My husband and I this week just celebrated forty-seven years of marriage. He's my partner and um and my soulmate. Uh, also our son who started in kindergarten and and um Carlisle School System and dropped out in the twelfth grade is a chemical engineer. So is very successful. Uh, the other thing is when uh I interviewed for AMP very, no women were in diary pair. And I convinced them in my job interview to hire me and when later on became, I went through the tool and apprenticeship and has had, I had a successful career with with AMP type of TE connectivity, kept changing names. And the third thing is I'm proud of is the accomplishments I've made in in the Carlisle community. Uh, I was involved, I was on the Carlisle Food Bank um board, uh was the person that was in charge of the uh building committee when we went from St. Paul's to build the present facility at Dixon College. And I was also on uh the fundraising committee for the purchase of the Carlisle Theater after it had closed down. And um and helped out with a lot of the uh clean up to get it ready.
Thank you. Kate Mel.
Um, I would say that the first thing um would be while I was um working at Bosser Library, um, I stepped into a newly created position of um adult programs and community relations. Um, and I helped to grow um the uh sort of community programs um for adults, not just uh book clubs, but concerts, lectures, um craft circles, game nights. Um, and and I, which has continued to to grow and develop since I have left the library, but I I feel proud of being a part of a um a reimagining of what a local library can be for the community. It's not just about books, but it's about a community gathering space and resource um for the community. The other two things would both be um in my role um as the Development Director of the YMCA. Uh, when I first started at the Y, I didn't know anything about fundraising despite stepping into a fundraising position. Um, and over the course of the ten years that I've been there, um, with the help of some of the most amazing and dedicated volunteers in the community, um, I've helped to grow the um annual fundraising, which supports the mission of the Y to uh the the largest um annual campaign that we've ever seen in the the most recent year. And the more money that we raise, every dollar that we raise um at the Y in our annual fundraising goes to support the mission of the Y and goes directly back to help um the community to allow kids and families to have access um to the the programs and services at the Y. So I'm very proud of that. And um if any of you have driven down um Southwest Street lately and seen the brand new YMCA, um, I'm I'm very proud to have been part of the team um that raised the nine point one billion dollars um to to create this wonderful resource that now will be a gift to the community for decades to go.
Thank you. Councilor Hicks, any questions for the applicants?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no questions, but just a a short commentary. Um, just want to um highlight that unfortunately, we're, you know, we're only looking for to fill one position, but after hearing some of the objectives and and plans that that folks want to get involved with, uh, I am encouraged in the fact that we have um a nice range of commissions and boards that um are addressing many of these issues and um uh, I I think um getting back to one of the initiatives that I think put us in a good position to become an All-American City was to deal with the global challenge of of climate and within that commission. We're actually coming up with implementation plans that actually I think every one of you have mentioned something that's important to you that we're looking to address in that commission from energy efficiency, from bike and pedestrian safety and accessibility to waste management, um, which is a long way of saying there are roles for every one of you to fill. If if you're you're not um selected to be on council, uh, I think some people think I'm actually on the Climate Action Committee and I have this as a secondary job being on council. If I added up the hours, that actually may be true. Um, bottom line is there are a lot of ways to serve and I'm uh, I'll be happy to direct any of you uh to a way of getting you on a board or commission that could do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you had made the point I would make, actually after I lost that race in two thousand and five, I was on the Water Authority for a couple of years, so. So there's and then and then returned to council. Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Thank you. Um, and yes, I'm also in the Cumberland County Planning Commission. That's my other volunteer gig and and I help up climate. I do a lot of things. Anyway, um, I don't actually have a question for everyone, but I do have just um, just because I don't think it was touched on too much for um uh, for Ethel, uh, you were on the planning commission because I'm on the planning commission. I I was just wondering what your experience was on the planning commission. I didn't see the years on it. I was just wondering, um, you know, any any takeaways or any?
Well, I can tell you that for uh most of our meetings, um, nobody showed up except for the person that was presenting their um their plans for the development. The only one that I remember that was a really hot button was when um our codes enforcer uh suggested that we do an inspection program for rental properties. And he had seen it in other communities. And that is when every landlord, I think in town, showed up. And they were very, very vocal about it. Of course, you could, you know, and it never got passed. But it was going to be something that would, there was a certain criteria. It was to uh the bucket code for the stay. It would be following and everything. So that was my experience on the planning commission.
Thank you. Council Graham, see any questions for the applicants?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Hicks stole some of my thunder. Thank you all uh for being here, for applying, for for putting yourselves out there. Um, I think you all are would be great assets uh helping the borough in some way. Um, so Megan, you you touched on this and this is uh going to be one of my questions. If you could each tell me um what your thoughts are on our current uh trash pay as you throw system in the borough.
So that's that's for everyone. So we're going to go back to our order. Mr. Mr. Thompson.
You said you're asking about the trash collection?
Yeah, ju- just I wanted to get everyone's opinion. I mean, obviously, some of you probably know this is an issue that residents uh talk to us about, post about on social media, uh, and will be potentially by the end of your term, uh, if you're picked in front of you um with the new contract coming up. So it's it's not a yes or no, or I like or dislike, just your your general opinion or however you want to take it.
I have a very good relationship with the trash, how people pick up the trash here. Uh, I have no problems whatsoever about, you know, what what I may be a detriment to them. I might put too much trash in a bag, you know? But they don't complain about anything and what I would be concerned about is the cost of those bags. And the the um, the durability of those bags, it seemed like they're a little flimsy and don't keep much, you know, trash in there. But for the most part, you know, um, I'm out there to meet meet them on on various occasions and I have conversations with them. I'm glad we got somebody that's out there in this cold that go out here and pick up some trash. So I'm very satisfied with what's going on.
Megan Anderson, you're you're next.
Well, as I expressed that we did have some issues and um I think I my husband has a little bit more of the issues because there's times where our trash comes on Monday and he now works. He still drives trucks, but he works for Hershey. So if he's ever had twizzlers, he's probably hauled them from the twizzer plant to the warehouse. And his schedule was always Tuesday through Saturday. So on Mondays, he would see the trash guys and there's days that they would just decide who to where to go. Same thing with the um recycling. There was times when we would come home and there's just trash everywhere. They just didn't care and here's us. They just didn't care. And here's us, who where my husband works fourteen hours a day, has an hour drive and hour back, comes home and finds that he has to now clean up trash before I get home or even clean up, like I said, the grass before he can even put his car in the driveway. It's if that's the kind of um the people that they have working for them, that's up to them, but we are the ones paying for it. And, you know, we sometimes will go to um giant, and my husband has to get three, right? There there's fifteen, twenty bucks in our grocery bill that we have to get just so we have them in stock. And now with these tags, I mean, if I can't fulfill the same amount in one of those black bags, then now I have to pay extra for myself and my husband. We have animals, so we do have like litter and stuff that we need to get rid of. So it's now plus with the bag cost, that's more than we normally would pay with the orange bags, which are also not very durable at times. And, you know, he's tried to tie it and the string rips and he's like, well, how are they gonna get it now? So he's literally carrying it like this off to the you know, like a sack and to the end. And he's like, are they even gonna take it? Because with the people that we have on our route, we never know. And so that's one of the things we do want, which that would even even we have no problem even paying for like the big huge bins, because as I found out that there's four houses on Earth behind us, because we are in a circle, that are part of North Middleton Township. And they have those bins while the same truck comes and gets our orange stuff and gets their bins too. So obviously, they're capable of doing that. It's just we would rather do that. You know, a lot of people in our community have spoken saying that they would love to just have a fee per month, three months, or even with like the water and sewer bill added to that. I mean, that would be something that we would be willing to pay. Just so we don't have to worry about those getting those orange bags, running out the store. Oh, wait. Saturday night, my husband's like, we don't have bags, so we can't put trash out this week. You know, it's a little inconvenience for us.
Thank you. Ethel Carrier.
Well, I'm a little bit biased because I was on the committee that put together the uh the implementation of the current system. So at the time, uh it was every man for themselves or woman for themselves. And we had, I don't know, four different trash collectors in town. And every day there'd be a different trash truck come by because we would uh you would book your own um trash hauler. But there was always borough bags. So the committee went through and we benchmarked other committees. We had a lot of discussion. This was because of the mandatory recycling program. So how were we going to implement it? What were we gonna do? We had public meetings. And already the borough had a bag system in place. And because there are people like on our end of town, we're on thirty foot lots. Some people's lots are only fifteen feet wide. You've got parked cars. Makes it very difficult for trash haulers to go with arms to pick things up. Even our recycled bins have to be and pushed out before they can be emptied. Uh so anyway, we decided to go with the bag system because many residents were already on it. So that was the plan. I don't have any issues. Uh it takes us a month to fill up one bag. And I know there's a lot of people, I know, I guess the last contract, people came out and said, hey, I don't do a lot of trash. So um um you know, you're not gonna be able to please everybody. Um you just have to uh maybe there'll be some alternatives, maybe two sizes of bags or maybe even people who want to have the bins, they can have those or something like that. But like I said, right now, we don't have any issues with uh trash haulers.
Okay, thank you. Kate Melon.
Um I think that there is no other single issue that has um generated so much public comment and in some cases anger and rage than um the most recent trash contract. So I I thank you for your service on that and I I apologize for um some of the comments that I've seen you um receive. I am a single woman. Um right now I live in an apartment, a multi uh unit building which has its own trash service. So I'm not part of the Borough um Trash Service, but in my previous apartment, I did use Borough Bags. Uh and like Ethel, I would only use one bag every three to four weeks. Um so I definitely understand um the the point of view that um that paying per trash use is more fair um for those residents who don't generate as much trash. But I can also understand um that larger families who use more trash would want um a more economic position. So um I support the current trash system as it is. I would have liked to see um a hybrid option, but I do know that you were limited in the bids that you got and nobody gave you that option. So it wasn't something you could offer. Um again, uh I'm I'm in support of the system, although I'm not a user of the system.
Thank you. David Scherr.
I um worked with a number of uh counties in Maryland in in my first career on on their landfills and their their solid waste management systems. And I consider trash collectors and haulers to be heroes. They're um it is really a terrible job and and um and I I have no complaints at all about the way that the job is executed here in Carlisle. Um I understand the 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 reason that people are angry about the cost of the bags. I think um the bag procedure is quite good um because it does um encourage people to um to not create as much trash. I think that um recycle, the acceptable recycles is pretty impressive uh in the borough. Um because as I think you probably all know, the almost nothing is recyclable these days because of the economy. And most of the increase in the bag price is because the hauler has to take it essentially to a landfill. And and so they're picking that up for free, quote unquote. Um but they have to be paid somehow. And and I know that the borough um on the the borough's website, you've explained that um in with regard to the the outcry um uh recently, but um I don't suppose um I I suppose a lot of people just don't understand it. So it's it's perhaps one of those things that um we just have to accept that um it's it's a little there are too many, too many wheels turning perhaps for people to understand it well.
Thank you. Counselor Stu.
Uh first, thank you all for your interest in serving on council and for coming this evening uh to answer our questions and and speak on um the the questions you've already provided written answer to. I have one question that I would appreciate if each of you could answer. Um to you, what is the most important responsibility for someone serving in elected office, particularly in local elected office, which is what this position would be? And I think we're back to the start of the alphabetical order. Ms. Ms. Anderson.
For me, it would be at least listening to everybody's opinion out all our residents. Because, you know, we may have come up with one idea, but if you listen to, you know, my husband and I, we look on Sundays, going to brunch and stuff at like some of the local restaurants downtown. And some of the things that those people can come up with, you know, for certain solutions like, hey, did anybody ever think of this, you know? And these are the people that work at these establishments, you know, because we've gotten to know them pretty well. So we have those kind of, you know, um conversations. So I think it's more of, you know, maybe bringing up a topic and asking your neighbors, hey, what do you guys think of this, you know? Just to kind of get more input because sometimes the people you don't think would have the a solution for a problem or the people that and they, you know, they because they're thinking either outside the boxes, you know, I was always taught, you know, don't always think of it this way, try to think of other ways. And plus in my field, I figured I found that out, you know? When it comes to like the stormwater, you might think a pipe can go from here to here, but working with my coworker, I have found out that, okay, well, we can do this, this and this. And it's like somewhere I would have never thought of. So sometimes even just like bouncing things off with others in the community. You might find, hey, we never even thought of that, but this is much better than we even could come up with on our own as a team. And I think that's just what we need to do.
Thank you. Ethel Carrier.
Well, I guess the most important thing is it's not about uh me, but it's about the community. So you have to look at all sides of the uh story. Unfortunately, when we would hold meetings, it's always the same people that come. And so it's it's very hard, it's very difficult to get a lot of community um uh opinions. Well, now with Nextdoor and some of the other social medias, maybe it's a little bit easier. But again, I see it's a lot of the same old people complaining. But I would try, I would work with the community and uh hopefully on a big issue, there would be a committee that would explore those uh different solutions that uh would come to me as a person on council that I can then uh vote on.
Thank you. Kate Melon.
Um I would say um the most important responsibility is to make sure that um all citizens and constituents feel um that they have been heard or are able to be heard on issues that are important to them. Um but yet also to make um decisions for the public good in a fiscally responsible manner.
Thank you. Dave Scherr.
Uh listening um to residents and and business owners, of course, is is very important. But I think the the most important aspect of serving on on the council would be listening to one another. Um when I served on the um Home Rule, the the Governance um uh Board, what's it been, three, four years now? Um we were struggling with um uh the issue of of the mayor. Um and the um as as I'm sure you know, that the there was a a pretty significant um divergence of opinion in the borough of um of how to deal with the election of the mayor. And um that we we successfully suspended our own opinions as there there were six of us, I think. And and we we talked about it without um saying, well, this is the way I think we should do it. And and we devised what I think turned out to be a pretty successful compromise um of of the um equal seat um uh for the mayor. So I think um listening and suspending uh an opinion and then um being willing to uh perhaps come to a conclusion that you would not have come to uh in the first place is the most important attribute.
Curtis Thompson.
Yes, um what I think is most important is um people should bring something to the table instead of bringing the problem to the table. Um we are very, very good at articulating the problem. But such being the case, if you know so much about the problem, go out and find an answer to that particular problem. I think sometimes we we get stuck on issues. And what ends up happening is nothing is done. So I mean, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, you know, um be able to articulate an issue, man, that is causing a disruption, you know, and how things how things function. But bring something to the table. I want to be a part of this council because I feel like I have something to bring to the table. Um when I was a community development specialist, I was given all these directives and objectives to achieve with no money. I said, how do you expect me to put an education program together and no money? And an economic program, buy your home, uh be able to buy your own home, uh putting these programs together. But for some reason or another, I was able to do all of that with no money. So I mean, I'm not saying that to put a feather in my cap. But I'm saying when you when you uh become a part of these types of panels and all, uh it it's not the chat and shoot, you know, in in your position. Bring something to the table. Um a- a- another thing that I I I I get frustrated about is people talk a lot about race. Okay, we're gonna be talking about this thing fifty years from now. We're talking about the same things that are still happening today. And just sitting here, I can remember being back there in that room when we uh the community where I live in, we were discussing, man, how to get more involved with with the Borough Council. And I mean, there was a heated exchange of ideas back there. But they weren't not only talking about the problem, they were bringing solutions to the to the uh to the issue. So I'm saying in short, um we got we got, you know, br- bring something to the table. I mean, I I appreciate the prestige and everything of being a Borough Council member and everything. But if you're not getting anything done, or if you don't have anything to bring to the table that for somebody to debate, you know, to confirm it's a good idea or a bad idea, um I I I think you're wasting you're wasting uh valuable people's valuable time. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh Counselor Stu and I have been interviewing people for quite a while for our boards and commissions. And it's nice that the my question um sort of dovetails a little bit with that. And so maybe we've been we've been doing it too long together. Uh my question, we'll we'll start with Ethel Carrier. Um community engagement is a challenge for all municipalities. How how can we do better here in Carlisle? Sure. Com- community engagement is a challenge for all municipalities? How can we do better here in Carlisle?
Um well, one thing, and this is for all organizations. It's hard to get people to volunteer because they got full-time jobs. They have kids. Covid right now has made it worse, you know, because, you know, they got days where kids were not going to school or going to school or early dismissal. Or your kid has a running nose and they send them home. Now you gotta go leave work. So that's been a problem always, you know, get people involved. So in order to get people involved, they have to be excited about that particular um uh community uh event or or plan or something like that. We didn't have any problems getting people involved with raising money for the food bank. We didn't have any problems getting people to volunteer at the food bank. We didn't have any problem getting people to volunteer at the theater. So um some things are gonna be harder than others. And I I don't have a a big solution. Usually you go to the people that are always volunteering and those are the people that will volunteer more. Um uh you know, uh that's again, uh it depends on what 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 you're looking for and uh finding the right people to fill those spots.
Thank you. Kate Melon.
Um yeah, community engagement is difficult. I say this as someone who works in a nonprofit and works with volunteers. It's difficult to get um sometimes volunteers engaged and understand the importance of the work that you're doing in the community. Um it's also difficult, I think, um with uh being able to get your message out to people um with the decline in readership of of the local news, for instance. Um you you don't really have one source of information. Um I do applaud the borough's efforts over the last couple of years to um to strike out on social media with your social um media, the communications coordinator that you have um in order to try to meet people where they are um on Facebook or on Twitter or um uh somewhere in the in the virtual space as opposed to, you know, picking up and reading the print newspaper, although I do support the local print newspaper as well. Um so I I think just um trying to um meet people where they are and to do um a sort of greater effort of education to to explain to 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 explain to citizens exactly how decisions that are put before council will impact their their daily lives. And I think actually that social media right now is a great tool to be able to do that.
David Charron.
I don't have any um better suggestions than the ones I've heard already. The um um getting getting people with an interest in in a matter um to engage is a problem across the board for for um um municipalities and for nonprofits and for um for everyone. I've I've been the executive director of of a couple of um nonprofits, my executive director of one nonprofit and a secretary treasurer of another nonprofit. And um I agree, it it's very difficult. And I think as as Catherine says, um doing the best we can to um uh to use the the um the sources that people would look to uh for information um is is the best. And not to be flippant, and I don't intend this to be flippant, but we definitely get um engagement when there's a um a um an issue that makes people angry. Um, if that can can be turned, calmed, and then turned into a more productive uh discussion, that's perhaps that that initial anger would be a a reasonable motivator.
Thank you. Curtis Thompson.
What I think is uh we gotta take a look at our education system. We gotta start looking at different ways of what we teach, how we teach, and where we teach. Uh, second, I think we should get more involved with what our young people are doing. Um, every day I work at a school district here, a local school district here. These kids are bringing a lot of high energy to a conversation that many of us as adults either ignore or don't provide an opportunity for these young people to um share their ideas. I mean, I I I come up with the program of um music, music and art. I mean, since kids are walking around in high school with um bass guitars on their back and they don't have any place locally to go practice their um music. So I'm thinking, like I say, you know, w- w- when you come to a table like this, you you bring an idea. Get in touch with young people. Um, we still have two American legions here in 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 Carlisle. Now, both of them are for the same issue, I mean, for the same purpose. But yet we have two legions here that for some reason or another can't find some common ground to come together together. We've got a lot of organizations in this town that for some reason or another, we can't seem to to get together. So I'm saying first and foremost, we need to take a look at our 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 education system. I mean, we need to start looking at some ideas now that are going to start engaging young people at an early age. So they can get done with high school and get into school and start learning a profession for real. Cause I'm telling kids, I said, look, if you're not talking about, you know, making fifty thousand dollars a year, now you're gonna be broke. And I'm just saying that off the top of my head. I don't know that for a fact. But education, young people, getting involved with young people, and doing things that socially bring people together. Somehow or another, man, we're all over the place. This country's upside down. And we need to find a way to turn it right side up so we can continue on and give some of these young people a chance to live. Uh now, I'm I'm at the twilight of my life. But I'd certainly like to be a part of something that's going to allow me to make a contribution that will uh educate young people that I was here and that that I did the best that I could. Not only for myself, but for you to benefit also.
Thank you. Megan Anderson.
I agree with the social media. I actually, that's how I got into a few of, like found out a couple of different events that were going on downtown. And I didn't even know that people were looking for help with pride until acquaintance of mine got connected with me on social media. So if we can advertise, hey, we're looking for people to help with, you know, this event or you know, that kind of stuff, maybe we can get more people involved. And I know that not everybody has the same work schedule as a nine-to-five, eight-to-five job. And sometimes maybe we're missing those people because they're working like Ethel said, second and third shifts, where we have our meetings. Do we need to sit down and maybe say, okay, maybe once every three months, we have a meeting at a different time that they can, those people can make it and give us ideas of how, you know, express their uh their concerns or ideas that they have that might, maybe they travel to California. I mean, my brother lives there. I've been to California a couple times once. And there's things there where I was like, oh, I would love to have that here, you know, that kind of thing. So maybe that's what we need to do is look at the people who might not have the normal work schedule that can, you know, maybe adjust something for them to give us the ideas.
Thank you. I have a few more questions, but I want to make sure that uh uh other council members take the opportunity. Okay. I'll 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 move on. Um and we are, we'll be starting with Kate Mellon. Um, what would you propose to do to expand racial equity within Carlisle Borough?
Um, well, that's a great question. Um, the newly established Truth and and Reconciliation Commission, I think, is a great start um to allow um a citizen-led group um to identify um areas um that that need to be addressed. Um, and whether that has to do with um access to housing um or um the the criminal justice system um to to allow that commission to uh to put forth um a s- a series of proposals that then the borough could could act on to address maybe some inequities in policies or or borough code.
Thank you. Mr. Charron.
I I think the most important um uh aspect of of um uh racial equity would be um or economic equity um is housing. And uh the the um northwestern neighborhood that's um that the the borough has uh developed um on the old industrial sites, I think, is a a um significant step forward in in that regard to uh to provide um affordable housing and and um infrastructure, municipal infrastructure and um commercial um uh infrastructure. Be nice to see a um uh a grocery store in walkable distance. And I'm not sure that there's anything um quite like that plan. But I think um that is is definitely um going in a good direction.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, um, it it's kind of a difficult for me to give something definitive about that, but um as I said before, man, I I I've lived in Carlisle all my life. And I've been away just to, you know, take care of education and professional, you know, uh interests that I was pursuing at the time. Bu- but I can remember times in Carlisle, like up at Dixon College, where they had socially, good socialization uh activities. Uh, I can remember when um a lot of rhythm and blues artists used to come through Carlisle and ran up at Dixon College. And in that audience was a diverse group of people that for some reason or another, we was all getting along together in that cafeteria up there. So um it there there is a need to have some type of panel to take a look at this and maybe see what we can do, you know, to bring people together. I've always looked at, you know, some of the activities that go on in downtown Carlisle. Um, I can remember it was a robust economic ac- activity in Carlisle. Uh, and right now, I can't even remember the last time I bought a pair of socks in this town. So, you know, um having been through that experience and some of the 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 activities that they used to have up at Dixon College and the potential to do some more things. I mean, you got the Yamanik Festival and there's a Summer Fest. These are all good things that are bringing people together. But I think we need to do more of it. We need to get a panel of diverse people to come together and find more ways to do that because it's possible. I've seen it happen.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
Actually, I feel that um I actually went to high school. Uh, we graduated together with a gentleman who started a program for young kids who didn't have fathers, were of color, and he has built up to the point where these kids who parent mothers were working all the time, didn't have it, to where they're now graduating high school almost on honor rolls, every single one of them, and they're all starting college. Because this gentleman is teaching, which I'm not sure, maybe some of you might know the name Derek Toll's. He used to play for Penn State, I guess. But he went, he took his money from when he went to NFL. He only played a few years and he says, I'm going back to my community. And I, the problem that he saw, he built up. So he would be someone that I would actually ask, where where do you see that we could change what we see in our community? What's the best way? Do we start with our young people and have like a community center like this, like he started? It's called Inspiring Minds. And he teaches the boys how to tie their tie because most of them don't have a father or uncle figure to show them how to do that for a job interview. Teaches them how to cook. He teaches them, he works with them on their schoolwork. He's got tutors there. You know, maybe we need something like that in our community so that maybe the diverse is, starts young and other people in the community, like, as they said, as um Dave David said, he's big in his engineering just as much as I am. Well, maybe we can help inspire those kids to go into engineering, you know, with our background. Take them to unfield trips of stuff that maybe we designed to say, hey, we did this. Sometimes that's probably neat, is to show a kid. And maybe that's where to show them that maybe we are we're here for them. And then maybe the diversity will grow into the community outside of that. I mean, that's not only that process of when I think of how to do it because I've seen him do it in our community.
Thank you. Ethel Carrier.
So what are the things that I think is, well, one of the things that's unique to Carlisle is that all of our elementary schools feed into two middle schools and we only have one high school. So not like other communities where you live in one neighborhood and you go to that high school and you go to that neighborhood, you're in another high school and you might have disparity between the two schools. So that's a positive for our community that uh that we have only this one school system. And so everybody has an opportunity to get an education. Uh, education, I think, is a key because you've got everybody going to the same in classes together. Uh, if they pursue their education, they make more money. Um, I uh um so one of the things that when I was working, and again, because of Covid, I'm sure this is not happening, but uh we had always uh take your kid to school um for that for that day. And since my kid was already out of the house, I would take other kids to, cause I work for an engineering company. And we had activities throughout the day, so they got exposed. We also went out into the community and they had assignments for um like a fireman, a policeman, an engineer throughout the day, some of the local schools is uh um uh schools in the Middleton area. So uh uh again, be uh because of Covid, I know that's not happening. Um, but I think it's a positive because of where our school system is and that promotes diversity.
Thank you. Okay, I have only two more questions. I have many more questions, but you know, we're we're not going to be, I I spent until one AM at another municipal meeting last night, so I'm not going to keep us here that long. Um, this one, if you take more than ten to fifteen seconds to answer it, you you're doing it wrong. Um, could you describe your leadership style in one to three words? Uh, we are starting with Mr. Charron.
Uh, could you repeat, please?
Please, sir, let me, let me do this.
Okay.
Describe your leadership style in one to three words.
Okay. Um, one word, collegial.
Mr. Thompson.
Informal.
Samson.
Education.
Ms. Carrier.
Collaboration.
Ms. Bell.
Highly organized. I love spreadsheets. Sorry.
And then and then my my final question, uh we begin with uh Mr. Thompson. Police and fu- police and fire services are are core to the borough's mission. What strengths and weaknesses do you see in those departments and how would you propose to improve them?
Make sure they're adequately funded with qualified people. Uh, it's just like I think I mentioned in my uh statement here, that I am a big advocate of the first responders. And I think some of the things that are happening in in the world today, we need to be prepared for that. But we also need to be prepared to have people prepared to deal with this. So whatever we can generate in terms of funding or raising funding, however we do it, whether it be through so- socialization or whether it be through grant writing and whatever, make sure that these people are are taken care of. Cause our hospitals are being overrun. I'm reading about it. I'm learning about it. Uh, I I get a report every day about the number of people that are either infected or are in close proximity to somebody who has uh uh Covid. So we need to put some money into that and make sure we have competent, qualified people in place to take care of those services. And it should not necessarily have to be volunteer either. I'm I'm a big volunteer advocate. But let's if, we need to get real about this. We need good people in place.
Okay. Ms. Anderson.
I feel they also should be like well-funded, well-equipped. Um, if they don't have the tools to serve us, then we're just putting them in a bad situation, um especially firefighters. Um, as for the police, um maybe find ways. I know we've had some issues with our one neighbor, they're, they moved out, but they were kind of had their hands tied to solve the problem. They knew what the problem was, but they couldn't solve it because they didn't know how directly to solve it because it was during Covid. So the person who would have been going to jail should have gone to jail, but they couldn't take them to jail. And so the the issues were consistent. I mean, I think my husband and I called within an hour three times because soon as they would leave, it would start right back up. And so, you know, they need to have the resources to be able to get people in a safe spot if they need to. And like that was a domestic disturbance. They couldn't separate them. The only way they could separate them was tell the one person to leave and then they would come back five minutes later and it would start again. So we need to find ways of giving them the resources to be able to do their job effectively.
Ms. Karen.
Uh, well, I know that we have the one of the uh the oldest operating volunteer fire department in the country. And I know over the years, a couple of the fire companies had merged. Um, I'm really concerned that one day we may be faced that we need to have a paid fire department um because of the way this area is growing and because decline in people volunteering. As far as police goes, I hear that it's becoming more difficult to hire people to be police officers. They don't, it's become more dangerous, maybe not in Carlisle, but in other communities. But eve- even one of my friends told me her husband is a police officer in Silver Spring Township. And she was saying that even Carlisle was having problems for a while. Maybe still is hiring officers. So, you know, that I think that might be a long-term trend that we have to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Mellon.
I I agree with the adequately funding, especially with the the fire department and the, you didn't mention, but also the local EMS. Don't appreciate that it's a subscription service and and it has to to run on on donations. I think that these are really important community services that should be invested in. I do also, in terms of the police, and it might be an issue of funding or resource, a lot of people's only experience with police or is is when they're at their worst. And I'd like to be able to to see a lot more positive experiences where they can actually interact with the local police force in a in a community engagement way. And again, I think that's a question of resourcing and staffing that, you know, we we need to be able to invest more heavily in the police department to enable them to be able to make that more of a priority. And and again, I I I think I agree with everyone. I I applaud the volunteer firefighters and I know, Mr. Mayor, that you are one. But I I think it's an important enough job that we should be investing in it and prioritizing it and making it something that that we value in the community.
Thank you. One last shot for council. Any follow-up questions on on anything? I'm I'm sorry, David.
I was essentially going to agree with everybody else. This is not an area in which I have strength. And so were I to be selected to be on the council, I would need to learn much more about the police and the fire service. But and sufficient funding to to retain and to provide training to both police and to to the firefighters, I think, is is essential.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for jumping the gun there. Again, any 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 last follow-up questions from council? Okay, then we'll move on to the next section section of our agenda. That's an opportunity, as we do have in every public meeting for for public comment. Is there any public comment on on the agenda this evening? Go ahead, please come up to the to the podium. Name an address for the record.
My name is Chris Cap. I live at 115 North Hanover Street. And I'd like to speak on behalf of Mr. Sheridan as the person who has run several nonprofits in the borough, Carlisle First Night, the Carlisle Pride Week. I'm the founder of Carlisle Pride Week. And I've worked with Summer Fair and I currently work in a capacity as a systems change coordinator for the Housing Authority and the Eastern C O C. I have had numerous encounters with Mr. Sheridan. He is incredibly inquisitive to many different sectors and things happening in the borough. He deeply listens. He has phoned me and emailed me on many occasions about poverty issues, housing issues, when things come up in the paper or at a council meeting. He asks nuanced questions and he truly deeply wants to understand the ins and outs of the problem. And his dialogue is careful. It is it is full of understanding and nuance and putting aside his own opinions and his own personal biases to truly hear the issues. This council and this town would be well-served to have Mr. Sheridan on on the bench.
Thank you. Any further public comment here in Borough Hall? And do we have anybody on on Zoom? No one on Zoom. Okay. So moving moving right along, I will call for the the vote by by ballot. Secretaries, please. And no cheating, folks. Eyes on your own page. Just, we're supposed to print our names on the ballots also. I think there's a line for that. So just in case I can't read your signature, please make sure you include that. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. No, no particular order. Mr. Krampsey votes for Catherine Mellon. Oh, I'm sorry. Get your papers down. Thanks. Council Perry votes for Catherine Mellon. Mr. Stube votes for Catherine Mellon. Mr. Hicks votes for Catherine Mellon, Kate Mellon. Brenda Landis for Kate Mellon. And I voted for Mr. Thompson. Kate Mellon, you have been appointed a member of Borough Council. Congratulations. I want to reiterate what what Mr. Hicks mentioned earlier, that please find this as an opportunity, the rest of you, to to volunteer on our other boards and commissions in other way, other ways within the community. There will be elections in in future, in future years. And I hope you'll have sometimes the courage to to jump into those those elections and meet with the many of the twenty thousand people of of Carlisle Borough. So with that, we'll move on to the final final agenda item. To do this under our Home Rule Charter, we need to approve a resolution appointing Ms. Mellon to Borough Council. Is there such a motion on council?
I will make that motion.
There's a motion by Deputy Mayor Landis to adopt a resolution to fill the vacancy of the office of Borough Council created by my resignation and to fill that with Kate Mellon. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Krampsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. And then we will have, we will have, we have Judge Maslin here with us tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Judge Maslin, for being here with us. Ms. Mellon, if you'll, you'll come forward and take the oath of office. Do we have the, do we have the written oath? And that, you can you can come on, come on up and have a seat with us there, Kate, on on either end. But the the final thing is going to be adjourned to adjourn the meeting, so you're going to be sitting there for about five seconds. Unless you'd like to make some 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 of the first comments as a as a member of council. Pass on that one. Okay, thank you. So I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all. Thank you to all the applicants for coming forward tonight.